Yeah, we're just hiding in one of the bags or something.
Okay, let's call to order the July 2nd, 2019 Historic Resource Board meeting. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Ready, begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mixed it up a little. Okay, everybody got their comms on, everybody mic'd up? Oh, that one's working. Yeah, roll call, please.
South Real?
Here.
Louise Munching?
Here.
Shirley Brewer?
Here.
David Maderos?
Here.
Yolanda Delgado? Here she is.
Okay. Do the roll call, our Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, public comment, we have a, do we have anybody for public comment?
No.
No? Anybody, this is for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Okay, during that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment. Mr. Kennedy, you're up, any informal project reviews?
No, sir, I have no informal project reviews to report tonight.
Okay, our consent agenda, does anybody on the board wanna pull anything on the consent agenda?
The May 7th meeting, there was, let me see if I can get to that. May 7th. Anyway, there was, we chose and elected the Garletta House to be awarded, and you state in the minutes that it was awarded to Georgina instead. Didn't mention the house at all, so you might wanna look at that a little closer and see if, because the facility itself wasn't even mentioned in the records.
Are you good with approving it as it is now, I mean, she can go back and fix it, or do you wanna wait?
Uh, no, she can go and fix it, we can just go ahead and approve.
Anybody else wanna pull anything, anybody from the public wanna pull anything? All right. We've got, so we've got the affidavit posting. Looks like we've got minutes from September 4th. September 4th, 2019. We're not there yet, are we?
January 8th.
January.
January 8th.
January 8th.
Yes, the minutes have to be approved, so even if you weren't at that meeting, you can.
Oh, we have two different. Okay, yeah, let's see, okay, January 8th and May 7th. Do we have a motion to pass, or to?
With the exceptions that I just mentioned earlier, I'll make a motion that we accept and pass consent agenda, all of the items listed.
A second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I mean, if I may, just for the record, I just wanna acknowledge Commissioner Yolanda Delgado came in at 6:02 PM tonight.
Yes, yes, thank you, good, now we don't have to worry about you.
Yeah.
Would you like to? Okay, folks, if you're not sure, San Juan has a new city manager, his name is Don Reynolds, he's first meeting tonight, so please. No tomatoes thrown tonight? They're expensive.
Yeah, that's why.
Okay, we've got an action item, considered recommendation of the Planning Commission approval of a sign for review for 301 Third Street in the downtown historic district. Mr. Kennedy, you're up.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. The item you have before you is a proposed sign package for a local business here in town called Lois's Unique Home Furnishings. The home furnishings just relocated from a location inside the Plaza Market, just down the street, to this location located at 301 Third Street, which is better known as the Union Bank Building. The business itself is all permitted by right in the mixed-use zone, it's retail, and it occupies currently the Union Bank. They had their grand opening just this last weekend, from what I understand, it went well. Now, the next step in order to advertise the business and to label it is a sign package. The sign package consists of two signs that are made of a roll-up material, or a vinyl material, from what I understand, and it's, the signs have already been done, they've already been handmade and painted, and kind of a unique color blend. One sign is two feet by eight feet, 16 square feet, the other one is four feet by four feet, 16 square feet. The two-by-eight-foot sign is the one that's proposed to be located in the front, covering up that marking area up there on the front of the building to help disguise it and kind of color up the building. The other one, four feet by four foot, that's one supposed to be located under the overhang on one of the walls, under, you know, the overhang of the building, more for pedestrian use. Based on looking over the side of the building, I include some pictures that I took when I was out in the field, it's supposed to be kind of covered up by the trees and all that, so it won't be visible from that public right away from the parking lot, along the side street right there, I believe it's Mariposa, if I'm not mistaken, and so anyway, you wouldn't be able to see it because of the brown-colored building, but it would be visible for pedestrian activity. Staff believes that this sign package is a complimentary, you know, to the building itself feature, and it would be very attractive. So, that being said, staff recommends that, the HRB recommend approval of this sign package. And that concludes my presentation tonight, myself, I can answer any questions you may have. We also have the applicants here in the audience tonight as well.
Okay. Thank you. Does the applicant want, have any input, if you'd like to say anything? Could you, could you come up, please, I'm gonna introduce yourself.
My name is Lois Wong, and I did a very good presentation for me. I've been a merchant for eight years in San Juan Batista, and yes, I am leasing what was the Union Bank, as well as the parking lot that's there. And my sign, which you have pictures in front of you, represents the decor that we have in the building. It's a very decorative sign, and I was told that our store is a destination spot.
Okay, if you could hang there for a minute, I'll see if anybody wants to ask you a question. Louise, wanna start?
Yeah, my question is, is this vinyl?
It's a vinyl material, but it will be mounted on, when you have to just take plywood and frame down and picture framing, and the framing will be painted black to match the doors.
Oh, okay.
I put, yes, I put the sign.
That's very cool.
Would you like me to open it?
Yes, wanna look at it, yeah.
Sure, absolutely.
It helps.
We want everyone to forget that it's a bank, or it was a bank, it was now a branch store.
Okay.
Well, that's the one that's gonna be on Mariposa, that's the one that's gonna be on Mariposa?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And what side is the other one going to be on?
The other one is two by eight, and the reason for that sign is because the Union Bank had their sign there, and they patched it up, so we wanted to cover the patchwork.
Oh, I see, oh, I see.
So that's the length of the patchwork on the building.
What about lights, are you guys gonna have lights directed at it, or?
It's just gonna be framed with like a picture frame in black.
Louise, do you have any more questions?
No, my concern was the, if it's gonna be, you know, mounted on a frame, because just like that.
There'd be flash on the wall, right, and then trimmed with, you know, like a picture frame molding painted in black to match the doors. I think I hit, there was a picture of the mold.
Yeah, but it's white, you can barely tell.
Oh, okay.
It'll be painted in black.
Yeah, I didn't know that was.
Does this fit the square footage that we allow for both signs, come within that?
Yes, ma'am, it does. I checked the square footage in relation to the street frontage, on both street frontages, and it fits right in, it's almost like right at the limit, but it's there.
From what I understand, it's gonna be removed at night, it's gonna be permanent.
Gotta be permanent, because it's sitting flush.
Yeah. And as far as the color, I mean, I'm just thinking about the permanency of it, you know, as far as the sun hitting it and things like that. You know, I don't know what, where you got the printing done. What type of?
It's natural material, and if it does look faded after a while, we would replace it often, you know, or if you've been in our store, we have some standards that we're trying to uphold, so.
And it's gonna go over the previous sign?
Right.
Where it's all stained and kind of ugly?
That's why it's as long as.
That's it?
No, I don't have any more. We'll open it up to public comment, maybe you might have to answer a question, but can we pull you back up if you do?
Sure.
Okay. Trish, do we have public comment?
Yes, Marjorie Palmer.
Good evening, I am a resident of San Juan Batista, and I've been here for 24 years, and I'm from New York, and I love it here, and I think it's a wonderful western town with this international flavor. You have shops from displaying products from Mexico, you have shops that have South American products, you have an Asian restaurant, and Lois represents the French culture, and I wanna support her. And I think that she has excellent taste, and I think the sign represents the kind of products and furnishings that you'll find in her store. So I very much support the sign, and if you look at the wall that's there now, it looks terrible where the Union Bank sign was, so this will be a big improvement to the town. And that's what I wanted to say, thank you.
I don't have any other speakers.
Some more? Okay.
City Ball, 41 Monterey Street, I'm just gonna reiterate with the lady who said Lois has been a really outstanding merchant downtown, president of the Downtown Merchants Association. She wants to enhance that building, tries since the building owner's not gonna paint to cover up some areas that need to be enhanced, and she has been very helpful for me with having a Christmas tree on her property too, when we move it forward with that too. So I just think that honoring her with having the signage would be very helpful for our community.
Thank you. It? Okay, we're gonna close public comment. Bring it back up, any more questions for the applicant, or Mr. Kennedy?
Can we state an opinion?
Sure.
I'm pretty shy about stating my opinion, you know. I think it's beautiful, I mean, it's just totally in keeping with what we're trying to do here in San Juan Batista, and it's very tasteful, and I love the colors.
Okay, so are we gonna recommend that the sign goes on to the Planning Commission?
Yes, like, so far.
Yeah, sounds good.
So, do we need a motion?
Trish, we, is this, we're not really approving it, but we're moving it on, do we, I guess we can always, we can just, a motion and then?
Yeah, just, since there's no resolutions.
Yeah, there's no res for it, yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion that consider for recommending to the, to city council? Or the planning commission, I'm sorry. Oh, we can bypass them and go straight to, no, let's go to, recommend for approval.
If you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if I can just make an announcement to the applicants, because this is just one more segment of the hearing.
Yeah.
To the applicants, Lois, just real quick, if you just stick around, because it's already been recommended on to the Planning Commission, so after this part of the hearing adjourns, Planning Commission takes over, and then they make the final motion. So I'd just like you to just stick around, so that way you can hear all the, whatever testimony may happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're down to the comments section. Any Historic Resource Board members have a comment? Okay, city planner?
I have no comment, sir.
City manager? Awesome, okay, so we have a motion to adjourn the Historic Resource Board.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, opposed? All right. And that was such a long meeting, does anybody need a break? Okay. So now, as Mr. Kennedy was saying, that now we wear two hats, so now we jump into the Planning Commission meeting, Tuesday, July 2nd, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. Call to order, can we have a roll call, please?
Here. Louise Munching?
Here.
Shirley Brewer?
Here.
David Maderos?
Here.
Yolanda Delgado?
Present.
And let's see, public comment, this is a section, you can comment on anything that's not on the agenda. Do we have any public comment? Nothing? Informal project reviews?
No, sir, no informal project reviews tonight.
All right, consent agenda, is there anything on the consent agenda anybody wants to pull?
Other than what I mentioned earlier, and so I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve of consent agendas A, B, C, and D, and E.
Do you have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, here we go. So the next section, section five, is a public hearing item. Mr. Kennedy, quick question, there's, this isn't, there's not going to be any action from this board on this, it's just more of a, if I could just go ahead and comment on that, and maybe, maybe just give a, just even give a quick report. This item is basically a recommendation from the Planning Commission, so yes, it is a public hearing item. It's a basically, you know, deliberation testimony, and then a recommendation on the city council. The item you have before you, and the city manager, Mr. Reynolds, will probably be taken over here real quickly, but just to kind of give you a quick rundown, this is an amendment to the development agreement for Rancho Vista by Meritage Homes, and it's to cover pending items. I don't know the details, but that's where Mr. Reynolds can go ahead and step in. And so this was discussed between previous city manager, Ed Twees, and the development group, or firm, and now it's before you tonight, to go through the proper channels before it finally gets finalized. That concludes my statement I have.
Don't I get to recuse myself?
Yes, at this time, yes, I'm sorry, at this time.
I heard too much.
Yeah. For the record, Planning Commission, Dave Maderos has to recuse because of the radius.
Yeah, he's within 500 feet.
I do apologize, that just dawned on me, thank you for reminding me.
I didn't hear it.
Okay.
So Chair?
Yeah?
If you'd like to proceed, I'm happy to. Ed was very generous with his time leading up to my first day today, so I did my best to get to speed on this complicated issue, but if I can put it in simple terms, am I on? Is it on? So it's working?
Let's see.
Okay, real good. I'm generally loud, anyway. But I understand, because you need to record it. So, this is a third proposed amendment to the development agreement, and the development agreement tried in 2015 to set forth all the fees and lock them in place, and did a fairly good job of defining the various fees, you can see there's a whole bunch of them, the original agreement, pages 18 and 19 are part of your packet, my gosh, there are 17 different fees. And what this proposal does is tries to clarify one in particular, and distinguishes development fees from impact fees. So we collect development fees to cover our costs of the development, based typically on units or floor plans, and then impact fees help us pay for infrastructure, such as water connections, traffic improvements, public safety, park development. So, in the original agreement, they were lumped together into one section, 2.10, and we had some issues, especially with the previous city manager and with Mr. Twees, frankly, about the definition of a 2,400-square-foot home. So you'll see in the draft agreement, Ed had highlighted there in the yellow, that the basic fees are gonna be based on a 2,400-square-foot home, and there was a disagreement between the city and the developer on what a home was. And so, Ed and the previous city manager felt that it included garage, for example, and patios, and the developer did not agree with that, and so that would decrease or increase the square footage. And so, the fee itself is based on the square footage of the building. And so, what the amendment does, first of all, is stipulate on page four of the ordinance, and I highlighted it in my copy, that the unit of measure be 2,400 square feet of conditioned space per dwelling unit, so that way it was clear, and there was no different way to interpret it, this is the one way we're gonna interpret it, and then it goes on to provide an example, that if it's a 2,600-square-foot house, then it's 10% higher, and we make adjustments based on the square footage, but we don't, we get away from this patio, conditioned space, et cetera. So it makes it simpler to interpret, and then it locks it in at fees appropriate for now, for July. And then the impact fees are separate now, they're in a separate table, and they've all been updated. So if you compare, the water connection fee is 9,000, and the recommended adjustment amendment to the agreement, and there's only 7,000 in the 2015 agreement, so to the city's benefit, we have updated fees. And we felt that in doing, approaching it this way, that we have a compromise that's acceptable to the developer, as I understand it, I haven't spoken to the developer, I don't even know if they're here. Okay, thank you. I will hear from them and see if that's acceptable to them, and the point is, is that we wanna move forward together with the developer, we want to avoid any legal conflicts or other things that might delay the project, and this is a compromise that was reached between the previous city manager and the developer, and that's what we're bringing forth today, so. That's the best that I understand it, and the developer's more than happy to interpret this for me and help me edit if necessary, so, there you go.
There's a lot to absorb, isn't it? Questions?
No, I don't have any questions. It was like 25,000 total, right, standing?
So it was 21, 25 per floor plan, and now it is 21, 25 per floor plan, again, on the conditioned space. Shirley, question?
No.
Louise?
We're locking, locking up in 2,400 square foot? Plus the increase, 10%, or just in the?
The unit's variant size, the variant size, Louise, so this is an average fee, and then as units get built, then we'll adjust accordingly.
Oh, okay.
So some are larger.
Yeah.
So when they sell their homes, that they sell, of course, living space 2,400 square feet, right?
Right.
So if they include their patio and garage in that 2,400 square feet of living space, we're gonna negate that, or how, what is the interpretation?
Just the conditioned space, so, conditioned space for the building code, and that's what we used as a reference, the usual building code, is that space conditioned for living, inhabitable space. So that's drywall, heating, ventilation, electricity, water, yeah, which garages and patios don't have.
That's not living space.
I know.
Not legal living space.
Anything else? I have a quick question, I know, I know it's the school district charges, I'm back to, or page 24, school district charges per square foot, why isn't it, public safety can't do the same, you're kind of locking them in on just a, and they are locked in on just a specific amount. Is that something that we've done for a while, or I always thought we had a square footage for our public safety?
I can't answer that question, I don't know, I'd have to go back and look at the actual resolution that adopted that fee.
Okay, thank you, as soon as I asked you that, I went, I mean, he's knocking, he stepped in the door yesterday.
Today, yeah.
Sorry about that.
No, no, that's fair, that's fair, we do the best we can.
Is, it sounds like we're being nice to each other, I mean, it sounds like we're, everybody's starting to work together a little bit more.
That was my impression as well.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Public comment, any public comment on this?
Do you want to hear from the applicant?
Oh, yeah, the applicant, yeah, I'm sorry. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, my name's John Bayless, I'm a married gentleman, and it is a rather complicated issue. It's been going on for a number of years, had a number of interpretations, as staff has changed. We were paying our fees under protest based on how they were being administered. We tried to work with the city to work when the water morgue tour was in place, and we actually waived our timeframe at that on our first 45 permits that we pulled. And so we've started paying on, we're getting ready to start paying on our remaining 40 permits out there. We pulled a few, and we did pay those under protest, but the concept of the development agreement when it was done, was that our fees would be fixed for that project, and in addition, we would give additional fees, and we gave $400,000 for water, we came back and gave some more money for water and sewer, and the drafting of the agreement was such that it had multiple interpretations. So what we settled on with Ed was that we have overpaid it probably about $8,000 a house on average, for the first 45 permits, and if we are not gonna seek reimbursement for those, that is done for the 45 going forward, even though our fees were low, our opinion was they were fixed lower back in 2015, it is, we will agree to today's rate, so if I walk in the door and have a building permit, we're just paying the same rate as everybody else, which ironically is lower than what we were paying. The concept of counting conditions, you know, conditioned space is what you charge for a school, charge based on conditioned space, no city jurisdiction, they charge building permit fees based on square footage of porches and garages and things like that, they don't charge impact fees. A garage doesn't cause an impact to water or sewer, and so you shouldn't pay more fees for water and sewer just because you have a garage. And we settled on that we'll just leave the fees that are paid, we'll pay today's fees, just like we didn't have a development in some manner, and just go forward with the remaining 40 permits.
Any question? Question, I did. Thank you, sorry about it, bumping over you there. Public comment now, anybody?
I don't have any cards on this slide.
Speak now? No? Okay, we're gonna close the public comment, bring it back up to us. Any more questions, concerns?
Sounds a nice, to me, it's a nice clarification, and we're beneficial, I mean, the city's getting a benefit, and also the developer's getting a benefit, so it seems like maybe there's a resolution now going forward, hopefully.
Good, that's good to hear. Okay, so we gotta do a resolution on this to, what exactly, we were bumping it to the city council? Is that what we're doing, is we're saying we approve of this and move it on?
Yes, it's 2019.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out what the resolution means.
On page 26.
The council will consider an amendment to the ordinance, but with your resolution in support.
Okay. Okay, does anybody wanna?
No, it's on 26.
Tackle that one?
15 is this.
On page 26.
I think it's 26, yeah.
Resolution right here. You want it?
Do you need a motion?
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Yes, 26. Well, we're just painting, I'll give you a resolution on the planning, resolution 2019 XX, resolution of planning commission to the city of San Juan Batista, approving and amending the Rancho Vista subdivision development agree between Meritage Homes of California and the city of San Juan Batista and recommends to the city council.
Do we have a second?
A second, Beth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, not 15.
Trish, which one? Is that 19?
15.
15. Mr. Chair, before we move on to the next slide, and let me go get Commissioner Maderos or David real quick.
Nah.
Yeah, could we get him? Okay.
Did we pass that? Okay, I was asleep, I'm sorry. You just messed everything up now.
Okay, number six, another, an action item, and this is on the sign that we saw earlier. Just anything further, pretty much?
I think, yeah, pretty much I glued the staff report back in the historic resources, so nothing further.
Okay, does the applicant have any more to say on the project? Nothing? Okay. Public comment on this subject? Anybody?
No, I don't.
Okay, close the public comment. And then any more discussion about that? All right. We're to our action. Who wants to resolve the approval?
Resolution 2019 XX, resolution of planning commission for the city of San Juan Batista, approving the sign for a new retail business located at 301 Third Street in San Juan Batista, APN 00-170-005.
Okay, that's 20, so 2019, 16. Okay, do we have a second?
A second, Beth.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here you go.
I'm just moving along, until we get to the new place, to this new stuff.
Okay. All right, we'll look for the crowd.
Here we go.
That'll bear. We need their comments. Okay, number seven is a discussion item, there won't be any action taken on this, it's a, it sounds like it's more of a informational.
That's correct, sir.
Due to the fact that this subdivision will be in our sphere of influence.
That's correct. And let me just go and give a quick staff report, if I may?
Exactly.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, and staff, and the public. The item before you is a county project for a major subdivision. Altogether, I count six lots in total, based on the map. What I did was, I included that you may have received already, and I passed it out to staff, and also I left copies over there on the, on that table over there where the public speaker cards are. I wanted to include more of an enhanced version of the vicinity map. The vicinity map I included in your packets just showed just a red shaped image with the city nearby on an aerial photo. What I want to do is further show you the location, the location of the city limits, and the sphere of influence. And anyway, what this is, is it's altogether, it's about, let's see, it's altogether about 30 acres in size, and it's a major subdivision. I don't have any proposed development, spearheaded by San Benito County. And it's to divide a parcel into six parcels in total, or into five parcels in total with one remainder, from what I can count. Altogether, it'd be, it'd be like one acre parcels in total. The zoning out there is county zoning agricultural, which allows five acre parcels by, as the minimums. So the zoning is proposed to be changed as well, to more low-density residential, from what I'm understanding. So tonight is to really take this item before the planning commission in a public setting to gather information. We intend to propose and write a memo back to the planning commission, or back to the county, I meant, of the city of San Juan Batista's position on this. This is inside our sphere of influence, and so, which means any county project must be reviewed by us, and we give a statement back to them, whether we support it or we do not. One thing I will say, after reviewing the county general plan, it is required that any county project in spheres of influence of the city of Hollister and San Juan Batista, they must tap into city-served sewer and water before any development should take place. So that's where we are right now at this time. I can answer any questions you may have, and that's pretty much all I have.
Okay. Louise, question?
Okay, is not the influence zone?
I'm sorry, can you?
Is not the influence zone? Influen? Flooded?
Oh, the flood zone, oh, I'm sorry about that, I misunderstood. There's no record, based on the map that we were reviewing on the general plan, I can't see the flood zone impacts this.
Okay.
The site.
This may, my concern about the using septic tank, being in flood zone. So five parcels, and that can turn in 10 homes, right?
Yeah, I was trying to go through the application, I don't believe it's that many.
Did you say five acre minimum?
Five acre minimum, based on the county, the county zoning agricultural.
How does that get changed at the county level?
That would have to be going through a zone change process at their level.
Okay, so that's nothing that we have to concern ourselves with at this point?
Based on the application, they do check off zone change on there. So we're basically stating our opinions and our position based on the major subdivision and the zone change on there.
But they're not, at this time, planning on developing it, it's just for the subdivision process at this point?
Just for the subdivision process at this point, from what I can tell, based on the application process. I did ask the question to the county, that, you know, do you have any development? And at this time, they don't have any, they don't have any site and development, you know, design plans that I was able to get.
So they're not looking for multifamily, or single family, or any, we don't know anything?
I don't know, I don't know that, those details at this point.
Okay.
Doesn't it indicate a major subdivision on the front page where it says zone change?
Yes.
So it says major subdivision?
Major subdivision, yeah. It's actually more than five parcels, more than five, and that qualifies as a major subdivision. It's like basically not, no different than like Rancho Vista or Copperleaf, you just treat it just like that.
Anything?
I'm still thinking. One of the, one of the things I'd like to know, within the area of influence, what is it, that's, I mean, what can we do, what can we say? What power do we have over this subdivision? As a government body? I mean...
We, at this point, from what I can tell, at this point, being inside the sphere of influence, we do have the authority to make a statement to the county planning commission and county board supervisors, that the city of San Juan Batista either supports or opposes this project, you know, for these reasons. Even though it's county jurisdiction, we do have say into how it all takes place.
And what is our influence on whether we oppose it or agree with it?
Our, you know, our influence, because based on, you know, being a jurisdiction nearby, you know, and so forth. Now, you know, there is the idea, you know, about further annexation down in that area as well. That was something myself and former city manager Ed Tweez were talking about. But when you look on page two of the 11 by 17 sheets that I handed out, when you look at the blue line, it's this sheet right here, folks, right here?
That's the sphere?
Right. The blue line is the city limits.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the city.
And the green is the sphere?
Sphere of influence, yes. But when you see where the blue line ends, right there, in order to annex it, we need to annex all that land, all the way down to Mission Vineyard, and then further south. You know, there has been talk with some of the property owners about possible annexations, but nothing's been turned in yet at this time. So that's, that's a position right there that we can take, that can we consider a possible annexation, and further discussion with the property owners. And one thing to consider, another thing to take into consideration, when I spoke to the county, they haven't even assigned it to one of their staff members, one of their planners yet at this time. So they're, they're pretty early in the process on this. So it's even a question mark if this even, if this might even go through.
Another question, is this land being used as ag or for cattle, or something like that, for?
Let's see.
It indicated it was ag, I don't know.
No, yeah, but is it actually used it, or is vacant or?
From what I can tell, it's vacant right now. Now, I haven't been down to the site to check it out, but there used to be a building on site, but based on the latest aerial photos I was able to look at, it looks like something was demoed, you know, so, yeah, I can't really tell what it's being used for, it's vacant right now.
Right.
It's referred to as agricultural pasture.
There used to be a trailer on there, mobile.
Even if it's, it's cattle?
Yeah, they call it pasture in their application.
Question. Is the city council also going to see this? Is this something they have to review over?
Right now, it's, I haven't planned on scheduling it for city council, we can, but the comments to the county are actually due tomorrow, July 3rd, based on their application. However, after talking to the county, they actually agreed to give us a window, a further window of time to review.
When did they digitize this info?
They got it to me like, maybe about a week or two ago, a couple weeks ago. It was like June 19th, I think it was, if I'm remembering the date. And actually, it came to me by regular mail, and it was received at the end of the week before, the week before last, so, late June.
And you said that the San Benito County ordinance states clearly that they have to use, they have to use our sewer?
Based on the county general plan. The county general plan requires that any development takes place inside spheres of influence, that local jurisdiction shall be consulted with, if that's the right word, to use city sewer and city water.
Do we have the capacity to take that on, at this point?
I think that's, yeah, I'm not sure.
That's one of my first projects, is to measure our capacity and report back to you, because we have a lot of property owners that want to develop both water and wastewater, if we have the capacity. So we need to make that determination, it's in the current budget. So I already have a proposal for studying that, hopefully we'll get it done the next couple months. I think, just a comment about bringing to their attention that this proposal is not consistent with their general plan, means that when they go to file their secret documents and others, they may have a headache, they may have a problem. And in order to be in compliance with their general plan, they're going to have to come to us, and we don't have much of sewer infrastructure on that street right now. So there's going to be a pretty sizable cost. And so they need to know that upfront, as they're going in and exploring the feasibility of the project. That we're, thank you for bringing this to our attention, this is one of our most significant concerns, and we need to fix that.
And that was kind of where I was going to, you know, on the, I know they've got it marked as septic, but if that's going to, I mean, that's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars of pipeline and street repairs, yeah, that's going to be brutal. Okay. Any more questions?
I would have a concern about, if they, if they get that approved to go from the five acre minimum, is that going to be a county-wide thing? If that's approved, then they can go to the smaller parcels instead of the five acre minimums throughout all of San Benito County?
I think just for that area, just for that area, because it'll be a zone change, just for that, you know, just for that.
Just for this particular 30 acre parcel?
Right, just for that one.
Who's changing that zone?
That's the county, county jurisdiction.
And if a county changed that zone, it can be sold as smaller parcels?
That's correct.
That's why they're going to subdivide it. The problem I have with this, not the problem, but concerns I may have with it, is how is it going to affect the future development of San Juan Batista? How does that impact us in that way? I mean, it just seems like, if we're going to annex that area, if we are, just saying, you know, what are we annexing? And what, you know, what is it going to be residential? Is it going to be industrial? What is it? And how does this connect to the city? I don't, I don't see how the city of San Juan Batista and the county is coming together on this for that purpose. And is there going to be an impact report that we're going to get as a city, saying how this is going to work for our city? Are we going to get some kind of positive feedback that says? The reason why we're going to go forward with this, and with the county and the city of San Juan Batista, is because this is being an opportunity, an investment, yada, yada, whatever it takes. I just don't see, other than somebody coming in and saying, we're going to subdivide it, see you later, thank you very much. I want to see a report that comes back to the city and says, this is a plan that we're going to put together with the city of San Juan Batista, being it's within our sphere of influence, and this is good for the county, this is good for San Juan Batista, in so many words. I don't hear, I don't see that coming out of the paperwork right now. And we'd like to see that. And what is our responsibility to oversee that? To make sure that we as a city have something to say about what goes in there? You know, if we're going to annex, what are we going to be annexing to? Now, for instance, the type of homes that go in there? And the rest of the property, what's going to happen to the rest of the property? And is it for low income homes? If so, in what, in what fashion? Because we could be looking at apartments there or something.
Single-family, one acre parcel.
You know?
These are single-family, one acre parcel.
I understand, but, you know, what control do we have over that to make sure it stays that way? If it's county, if we annex it, I guess we have more control, but...
I've been listening to that for the last 30 years.
Right. So where do we go with that? And I just hate to think we're going to leapfrog into this thing and we'll lose control. So what is the, what is the real plan for this? And how is this going to benefit the county and city? That's it.
The applicants are here. Mr. Dassel, do you have anything to say?
I have a secret card.
Okay.
Oh, great.
Let's hear what he has to say.
I should have waited.
You might have, yeah.
Well, good evening, thank you. I'd like to thank the planning commission and the staff for their opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jim Dassel, I live at 451 Mission Vineyard Road, San Juan Batista, and have lived there for over 40 years. Presently, I feel like this is a neighborhood project. We had the opportunity to acquire this property a number of years ago. And I really took issue with the way it appeared in San Benito Live and called it a major project. By definition, a major project is, from what I understand from planners and developers, is four or more. This is a total of six potential lot-split houses or properties. We're not applying for any building permits or whatever. There's 30-plus acres there, and our plan would be to have a lot split for six potential building sites. I'd like to say that I am local... I'd like to say that I am local, my wife's local, we've lived here for forty years and I, and I really think that the definition of being a building planner or developer is not my deal. I'm part of this community and have been for a long time. Kids went to school here, my son still lives here. Unfortunately, two other children can't afford to live here. And, and I think that's probably one of the reasons why I'm interested in trying to develop this property into something that may be something that's affordable. I can tell you that when the property became available, it would, to my wife and I and our family, it was somewhat of an eyesore. Although the Sangroth family owned that property for many years, they moved on and it transitioned to several owners and it deteriorated. And this is a neighborhood situation. Over the course of the last four-plus years, since we've owned the property, we've tried to enhance that property and I, and I think we've improved views yet, if you will, at least I'd like to think we have, and I think there's neighbors here tonight that would concur with that. Not being the developer type or having a full ability or knowledge into knowing how this process goes, I've enlisted the help of Alan Andred, very qualified civil engineer and land planner, and it was his suggestion that possibly reconsider the development of the, of the thirty-plus or minus acres, it's really closer to thirty-one acres, into six equal parcels, not necessarily in size, but it was the best way of utilizing the land as the geography predicates how we have to use it. And so that said, that's why we proposed and presented this to the county of San Benito. And, and at this point, it's early on and it's preliminary. As stated earlier, I'm not a developer, I don't intend to be a developer, I don't even want to be a developer, but in, in trying to find out the affordability of the next generation of folks that are going to be running our city and town someday, it's got to be affordable. And I think that this can be an affordable potential for locals that can't afford to actually live here. The next generation can afford to live here. It's pretty much available only to the outsiders that have the network that can make the investment in living in this nice place. That said, I, I know that I'm going to run out of time here pretty quick and I have a lot of things I'd like to say, but I'm not going to belabor that. I'm here to kind of try and address questions and I think there are already some questions that I've heard and I'd be happy to try and do that if you have those.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Do you, I wonder if you have a couple of questions?
I'm concerned about the infrastructure, the sewer, the water. You say a septic, you know?
Yeah.
And you're going to tap into our city?
In the package, you'll see that the proposal intends to, if it's developed, would intend to use septic systems. And that's the norm on Mission Vineyard Road. There's no city sewer capability on Mission Vineyard Road. Mr. Andred, my civil engineer and fellow that's helping me on this project and has been doing the math detail work that I'm not capable of being able to do, has not indicated that that's, that could be an issue. It's clear that we presented this as a potential septic tank situation. I'm not aware of anything that falls within the sphere of influence of any municipality having to be required to be hooked up to a water or sewer, um, municipal providing system. As far as the water's concerned, I had numerous conversations and discussions with Michelle LaForge over the course of the last year, year and a half, about the availability of city water. Presently, there is one city connection there that serves a water trough for the livestock that's grazing on that property. Michelle had indicated that she had no problem providing city water to six, five additional hookups, provided that we follow a very formal hookup procedure. She provided that in writing to me. I signed it and sent it back. It's somewhere in files.
Okay.
There, her comments, I think, were, God, we need the additional revenue to pay for the expenses of the new water systems that were being developed. That's the best that I can answer the water and the sewer at this point.
David?
No, I just, like I said, whatever we go with there, I would like to say that even if we haven't annexed the area, there is a connectivity there, other than sewer and water, that merges with the city and, you know, it becomes an opportunity for the city to merge with it in that area, an opportunity to find ways to annex the area because that project is there, you know what I'm saying? And if we do, is it walkable area, you know, can we get to town, you know, what about traffic, you know, that kind of a thing? So that, but I'd like to hear that kind of development. And as far as affordable homes, that's, that's an eye-opener for me too as well.
You're not planning on planning to build anything? You're just doing a parcel map?
Just looking forward, I'm just looking to that.
And I don't want to get into a dogfight and be caught in the middle of an annex or not annex, in-city, not-city.
Right.
I'm looking to explain the project as best as I can. I'm not going to be here and gone. A good example of that is what you've seen in the two major developments that are here. I'm not that. I don't even want to be that. You've got your hands full with those folks. But that said, I'm looking for communication with the city and there'll be questions that will come up in your mind as you're hoeing the weeds, you're mowing the lawn, or cooking supper, and I'm available. My cell phone number is in that packet that you received and I'll do my best to answer any questions that didn't come up tonight or address any questions that any of the neighbors may have. And I'm looking for the blessings from San Juan, the San Benito County Bill and Plan. That said, if you're done with me, I'll, I'll be here.
Shirley, question?
I, I wonder, in my own mind, if you don't plan to do anything with this property that you're now asking San Benito County to allow you to subdivide?
No, I'm not asking them to subdivide them. I'm asking them to, to give me a parcel map split for the property, not to subdivide.
Okay.
Just to do the parcel map split. And I might say that there are, to the east of this property and to the west of this property, there are numerous residences, my, my own home included, my own personal home, I lived about a hundred yards from this property, that are on less, that are on one acre or less property. So it's consistent with what's out there now.
I, I just, trying to put together the statements about the affordable housing and, you know, you want to provide that, that kind of thing and, but yet you have no plans to do anything?
No, I, I think what, I think the message is, is, you know, there, there are, I'm third generation in San Benito County. My son is with the United, fourth generation. And it's real clear that most of the younger generation can't afford to live in San Benito County when they're starting out. They go to Merced or Fresno or Bakersfield or, they certainly can't go down south and they sure as heck aren't going to go north. And so if there are properties available that have a rural setting, the potential and the choices that are out there are very limited. This, this may add another choice.
Thank you, Scott.
Luis?
Is there a question?
Yeah, I just, I guess, here's the confusion. The application, major subdivision, and then it has the description of purpose, it says subdivision, existing five acres and twenty-five acres into certain amount of parcels. That's, I guess, that's where I'm a little confused.
I, I don't control what San Benito County categorizes projects. We're just looking for a parcel map split at this point.
We would call it the same thing. We would call it a, a major subdivision, just because that's, that's, that's the crux of it. And I'm, I'm a little upset with the county that they didn't give you the heads-up about the sewer thing when you first started talking to them.
They've had this since, I believe, February the nineteenth. I think that's when it was.
They put it since February.
What was it?
We need to get together on this.
And if you're not all that familiar with what's going on with San Benito County Bill and Planning, they're going through a transition with staff. I understand.
Well, we're, we're familiar with that.
All right.
Yeah.
Actually, we were going to try and submit this before the end of last year and we didn't have the capability to take the money.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate your input.
And I'm here to answer any questions that anyone else might have while I'm here. I appreciate the time and attention and would hope that you prove it gracefully and everything's sorted out. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have some public comment on it?
Yes. James Dassel.
I'll just put it in in case they had questions or they had to address them.
Thank you, Darlene Voight from Twenty-Two First Street. I've been served on this planning commission for a while and following this for the last six years. I would like to put my input in. I know that we had a lot inside of the city that they wanted to cut down to smaller parcels. We declined that because it's in what we consider the industrial zone. Right now, we have to do a lot of work on that side of town and that's all zoned industrial. And I can't see, because he's talking residential, why we would want to divide parcels at this point to set it up for residential when we don't even clearly know what we have got going on that side of town and have, and I know that the planning commission needs to come back and study that and that's one of the things Mr. Reynolds has been charged with doing. So before you guys have even figured out what it is that this town wants and where, I don't see any reason to have any parcels in the county divided because, you know, we may, we might even want an agricultural ring around this city so that we can maintain it as it is because that is something that you need to think about, okay? And I know that it's very unfinished and I know that, you know, I'm trying to do it for the kids because I know housing is unaffordable. I'd love to have my kids living up here too, but I also know, having been involved with the city planning and stuff, because I was here for the general plan, et cetera, that until I actually lock in what it is that you want for that side of town and how you want it to look and how you're going to see anything else tie into it, I wouldn't approve dividing up anything in the county that is within the sphere of influence at this point. And that's my, my thinking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others?
Yes, Valerie Edlund.
Good evening. And Mr. Maderos, I have very valid points that he brought up. And I would reiterate what Darlene has said, that San Juan Batista really has to look about, look at creating the footprint that it wants. And as you drive out toward the canyon, if you go toward the Anza Trail, you've got some significant tourist kinds of activities and that all of that could very well be brought to the economic development for San Juan. So if you're breaking it down into five-acre pieces and each one is sold, this is not affordable housing. It, it's a very, very desirable thing to have a five-acre piece and I don't think a person who can afford a, a modular home is going to be able to afford a five-acre piece within this close of a distance to San Juan. So I just argue the affordability there, but I would definitely consider, and I'm sure that that's probably on your agenda anyway, to very much scrutinize the situation and what San Juan wants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trish, any more?
No. May I address?
Sure. Yeah, you had a speaker card.
Just in relation to?
Could you do me a favor, state your name?
Sorry, James Dassel. I would like to explain this to you. I think we got a little on the weeds with the affordable housing part of it and the five-acre lots. The parcel estate is a thirty-acre parcel and the county allows for five-acre subdivision. That's a county code. This particular project, the idea was to utilize one-acre lots and then put twenty, the remaining twenty-five acres in perpetuity, which would be a grazing and current existing use that it is today. The idea of one-acre lots were to be manageable sized places for most people, but still allow them to have an agricultural aspect on their property, much like we did on our one-acre lot with the horses and forage projects and sugar bees and whatnot. The affordable comment that my dad made, I feel, was in relation to his own children for having a project that would allow my two sisters and myself to remain in the, in the area. I was fortunate enough to find a fixture effort that I've worked on for the last, going on eight years. I'm still working on it, but my sister's more in that category because it just wasn't there. So I, I think that's what he means by affordable. We're not portraying that we're going to be able to mow and cut house here. And again, I felt like that kind of got misdirected there. So any other questions you might have, I'll clarify.
Questions for? Nothing? Thank you.
Thank you.
No more public comment? We'll go ahead and close public comment then. My two cents on this is that I know, what's that? I know Mission Vineyard Road well and, and it is a series of one-acre parcels throughout there and that, that is a large, I know a big chunk of that property, correct me if I'm wrong, it's on a, it's, there's a, somewhat of a substantial hill in the middle of there. Yeah, there is a hillside ordinance in the, in the county, so they're not going to be able to put a house at the top of that hill. It's a, it's miley, like I said earlier, I was upset with the fact that the county never relayed to the applicant that there is some type of stipulation because he's, he's in the sphere of influence that they're going to be kind of guided towards using our sewer system. And that's a, that's unfortunate that that didn't come out earlier and thank you for finding that for everybody. I meant, I could imagine the sticker shock, you know, at the last minute. So I don't, I don't have a problem with it, to be perfectly honest with you. I really don't. It's, it seems like a clean project and, and it's a reputable family that's been here for, you know, centuries, you know, century. It's not like, and they, and they haven't destroyed that property, they actually have made it much nicer than it was. I remember when the Sangroths lived there. I mean, because there's a couple of sisters that lived there, they were always nice to look at, but anyway.
If I can, and I have one more comment. I feel, I feel it's important that this isn't something that we're just doing to make a buck on and leave. If this was a bad project, we would be leaving. I mean, the idea to do this is because we're trying to enhance the neighborhood. My dad lives there and I live half a mile down the road. I mean, why would we want to do something that would pull the value or deteriorate from the local aspect? I mean, from playing little league baseball here to...
from playing Little League baseball here to riding our bikes in the Mission Ave Blackberries and get some nuts. I mean, I'm not gonna leave that to a town that's low and wants to stay in. So, I mean, the idea of showing up in a Mercedes and loafers and leaving, you know, is not on our agenda. So, I mean, I would love to see this evolve into a situation where some nice places can be had, and maybe some families could experience the same kind of upbringing that, you know, my sisters and I have here. And I think that's important, that good opportunities like that aren't overlooked because of some bad tastes, because of some other projects that haven't worked out so well or done as tasteful or done as well. That's just kinda my thought all the way down here.
Thank you. Is there something we can do? Kinda start a little conversation with the county. Obviously, the county's had this for a while, and I really think they should give us some... They need to give us a little bit of room on this one. This is kinda ridiculous that they dumped it on us this soon, and now the next thing we know, they're giving us an ultimatum on when we need to get a comment back to them. Is there something we can do to put some type of language in there saying that, you know, maybe there's some way that the county can work with these folks with doing... I mean, septic systems out there are... The whole area is septic systems. So why would this be any different? It's not in the... It's not in the... If we look at the influence, the watershed, that's one thing I started looking at, and I started looking at the maps, and it's... I really don't think it's gonna affect our watershed.
Let me just go and take a shot and see if I can do it. That's the point of like the memo that I wanna write, is this information that the concerns and our input back to the county jurisdiction. The good news was, when I talked to the senior planner over there, they're willing to give us like, you know, extra room that we need. So I can, you know, definitely respond to city staff and planning commission and public testimony comments. And then, you know, earlier, you mentioned earlier that, you know, can we take this to council? And, you know, my recommendation is actually, you know, it's not a bad idea. Let's do it. So that way, this thing is fully vetted. And so, anyway, in city council, it's... Today's July 2nd, next city council meeting is on July 16th. So we can definitely let them know that we'd like to take this to council for further review and so forth. So, but also, we can state the, you know, the connections, you know, those are concerns for us, and as well as like, you know, like with the rural character out there.
Yeah, it definitely would be an impact on our sewer system, that's for sure. The water system, there's already established water system that we have out there. It's been out there for, I don't know, since we were kids. So I don't wanna drag this on too much, because, you know, diesel prices just went up another five cents a gallon this week. So, you know, the longer we drag it out, the more it's gonna cost them in the future.
But I'm also asking the city, us, to reach out to the county to expedite this thing in a positive way. And I mean, I'm not saying anything here that would slow it down or prevent it from happening, but I want to be able to be within the sphere of influence that we can help anybody who wants to do this, that will be beneficial to the developers or developing and the city. That's all I'm looking for. And I think there needs to be more with the county versus the city. We need to have a better dialogue there and some understanding. And I'm not against the project either, but I think the county and the city needs to come together much closer on a situation like this because it's within the sphere. I just don't see it.
It sounds like the county's having some definite growing pains, that's for sure.
Well, we're here to help.
Yeah. Again.
Yeah.
Sure.
You know, here we go.
Kinda get a crux of what we're feeling here.
I think so, yeah.
And then maybe we can take a look at like a draft or something, and yeah, okay.
Before it goes out, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think... I don't... Do any of us think this is a terrible project?
No.
He knows the general rule. A property owner, in my mind, having sold real estate has a right to do with their property as long as it, you know, doesn't... isn't detrimental to the rest of the area or whatever. And I'm just giving some thought to what Valerie and Darlene said, and instead of looking at this in and of itself, is to take a look at this area and see if this is basically the way we wanna go. So, I mean, I have no objection, you know, to this, but I'd like to see that we don't forget what's going on in the rest around us.
Yeah, it was a worry. When I looked the first time, the proposal, I was like, oh, again, a kind of, you know, another division. And when I listened to the owners, I said, okay, I changed my mind, really changed my mind. So I saw it's a family project, it's a local project. As he says, not a guy who's gonna take the money and we build and take the money and we run away. I think I support... I like this project.
Awesome. Good to go. Okay. Awesome. Great. So you get general ideas, so, yeah.
I think so. It's sort of like the way I have it in my notes here. There's general, like, overall support of it, but just making sure that the county understands that, look at this project from the bigger context of what's, you know, from our general plan and their general plan together, and making sure that dialogue is there. So...
And the fact it's gonna be an impact on two parties as far as the sewer system. It's gonna be an impact on us, and it'll be a major impact on them. And, you know, nobody deserves to get a bill like that. I mean, there is no... They would have to run sewage line all the way to, from Mission Vineyard down Salinas Road to Dallamita. Maybe pump it. So...
It'd be that less distance just to hook up to Sewer and Hollister. We'll be a lot closer.
Okay, great. Let's... We'll move on. You good, Todd?
I think so. Yeah. Thank you.
Moving on to 7B, proposed noise ordinance for the hours of construction activity.
Okay.
Mr. Kennedy, do you have something on that?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. This item, I wanted to go ahead and put it on as a discussion item, 'cause it's kind of an old case, and now it's back before us, and it's in response to some construction activity that's been happening here within town. It's been brought to our attention from a constituent here in town about a passed resolution that was passed by planning commission, but it didn't make it to council. And it was about noise. It was about whether it be construction or entertainment, or, you know, that was what the noise ordinance or the noise resolution intended to cover at that time. But I wanted to bring it back because Resolution 201617 was passed by planning commission on April 5th, 2016. However, it did not make it to... It made it to... Let me back up. It made it to city council. City council kinda punted it and then punted it back to the city attorney and city staff for further review, but it stalled out. It didn't go anything further. And that was as of, from what I can tell based on the minutes, May 17th, 2016. And it sat dormant. Now it's back. And I wanted to ask the planning commission and the public that, is this something worth, you know, do we wanna restart this? Do we wanna look at codifying something? So we have a noise ordinance on the record for construction activity, for noise, for entertainment, and other uses like that. So that's pretty much my briefing I just wanted to bring up. It's interesting, I couldn't find a signed copy of Resolution 201617. The minutes told me that it was passed. So that's where we stand.
So we don't even have the verbiage on it, on what was passed? Do we... Do you have... Can you read the ordinance? Do you have the ordinance?
Yeah. Let's see. I have the resolution, and I include it in your packets. I did include it in your packets, along with the minutes. And that resolution does have the language.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a, let's see, how many pages? It's about a seven-page document here, and deteriorating noise. I didn't get a chance to go through. Percent.
He was asking, so everybody could hear it.
Yeah. Daytime hours would be between 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
It's not noise, is it?
Yeah. Nighttime would be between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Those would be the daytime hours. And... Based on the following table. But yeah, it's a seven-page document that I included in your packets. And this is just to kinda bring it back as a discussion. If you wish to agendaize this and either do further discussion or, you know, even make an action item out of it. You know, 'cause I just thought I'd go back to planning commission 'cause that's where it kinda left off at.
Do we know why they kicked it back, the city council kicked it back to planning?
From what I have in the minutes, I'm gonna go ahead and I'll take a look here, and I'll just read it off. Okay. Minutes, from city council regular meeting, May 17th, 2016. Okay, item B. The item, it's a, "Consider adopting an ordinance adding Section 11-04 to the municipal code dealing with noise." This item was continued to a future meeting so the planning commission can review and approve enhancements provided by the city attorney. And that's the last action there was.
So, oh, okay.
And I couldn't find any further action after that.
So, so all the updates were done, or?
Uh, no. No, sir.
We don't know what they are.
Right.
What's your recommendation?
You know, let's see. I think at this point, my initial recommendation, and it is subject to change, since we don't have a noise ordinance, and we've actually been using conditions of approval for construction, Rancho Vista project being one of them, and as well as several restaurants here in town, we've been using like individual. I would say it's actually a pretty good idea to go ahead and do an overall noise ordinance for the city as a whole. You know, it's... That way, we have something in on the records. At least that would be it. That's my initial call.
Chair, if I could have a few thoughts of my own. This is a brand new issue to me. Most general plans that I'm aware of have a noise element in them that give guidance for this kind of policy, and this would be an implementation policy. And it's common, most cities have noise ordinances, especially during special events and live entertainment, that kind of thing. Construction is an obvious thing that needs to be controlled. I would want the city attorney to review it for sure. The one thing that jumped off the page of me was no construction on Sundays or holidays. And I know some private developers who would just, you know what, do it anyway. And so, I wanna make sure that it's enforceable as well as has a strong basis in law. So we could possibly do research of other cities and our own general plan and come back with something for you to consider.
Good.
May I add a comment on the noise, that's not pretty, about propane cannons. We've been hearing those go off at...
Oh, that's right.
The cannons?
Those are in the county.
I don't know if it's Farm Mission Vineyard or not in the city, but we've had tractors that 3:00 AM fire up across the street and go for like two hours. That's hot, and we just hope in the middle of the afternoon, you can't sleep.
Can we time out real quick? We can... You can do a public comment in a second.
Done.
We're still getting the crux of this, and then if you'd like to stand up, please, feel free. Just kinda trying to wrap our heads around this, 'cause it's seven pages of legalese. So, it sounded like last time it went to the city attorney and never got back. So can we put like a leash on this thing, so it can fix it?
Can we have like a timeframe?
If it was two, it can come back.
So we can have like, how we set up like an alarm for the pain of the, you know, that planning thing, for the... Make sure we have like a timeframe and stick to that. For the attorney to give it back to us.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I see what you're getting at. I'm sorry.
So, just... 'Cause it's been there and still not back, right, since 2016?
Yeah. Yeah. Hopefully we're not billing that person.
Hopefully they're not billing us.
Well, actually, I did check in with the city attorney on this, and I asked what she recalled on this, and she actually had no information, no recollection on this. So it sounded like it, you know, that indicates to me that he never got to the city attorney, you know, from the staff at that time. 'Cause remember, this was May of 2016, and, you know, I'm not sure on the staff or ever got to her.
I thought it was a done deal.
And she doesn't sit in on the meeting, so.
Yeah. Can solve it.
This actually is a... It's funny that this has showed up, because I had three phone calls this week about noise, about music, and then a couple other things.
Yeah.
And then I saw this and went, oh, boy. Okay. Yeah, it's a good idea.
What about Hardines and the... Across the street, I can't... Leal's?
Leal's.
They've had this till 11 o'clock. Are we going to address that?
That would be...
Yeah, I know.
We'd need some teeth. Right now, we're gonna have no teeth.
Yeah.
That's what I meant about individual projects, whether it be like Hardin's or Rancho Vista or others right there. Like Rancho Vista has conditions of approval that's stated, and that's for individual projects. And it's just one more thing that we have to look after as opposed to a whole ordinance that covers a citywide.
Which is probably just confusing as heck for some outfits like them. When they normally come into a city, they, you know, here's our noise ordinance, and, you know, it's XYZ. And then they show up and they say, and we say, well, we kind of have a noise ordinance, but we need to have a little sit-down. You know, it's confusing. If it's , you know, and it's black and white, it's gonna be pretty easy. Now, we do have code enforcement in town.
Do we?
Yeah. He's good at his job. So, yeah, can we get the... Mr. Reynolds, couldn't we get the attorney to...
Absolutely. That would be my recommendation. That would give us more time. Todd and I could look at it together.
That'd be great. Do you wanna see strikeouts or anything like that?
No, just go ahead. Just bring it back to us so that we can say, whatever you want from us, to make a motion on anything or decide as to what we can do to help you with that, fine. But, you know, maybe we need to review it and, you know, put it on the agenda, yada, yada, when it's ready.
Yeah.
Anything else?
And then we can vote on it.
Within that certain timeframe?
Thirty days.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
At least an update.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
By the next planning committee.
Well, I don't know if we would even be considered under that, because we are Mission Vineyard, so we're obviously county. But I don't even know if there's any ordinance against farming at 3:00 AM fired. Do tractors with lights? I mean, I'm kinda surprised.
Probably not. It's something I've been... I'm used to it. I've been listening to it for 53 years, so.
Oh, really? So that's a big call. We've been...
To me, it's kinda music to my ears.
Oh, well, we've been there for years, and we've never had them go out like in the middle of the night full on and start.
Yeah. I've made some phone calls to supervisors for the county, and they were very helpful.
Okay, so that's who I would need to talk to?
Yep.
I mean, it's only happened a couple times, but I just thought it was gonna be a fun one.
And let them know where you're coming from and what's going on, and I'm sure they'll be happy to help you. And whatever you learn, bring it back to us, so we can help you sustain that.
Okay, yeah. I'm just curious about that.
As far as the propane cannons, that's a lot of... The organic farmers use it instead of pesticides, and it's supposed to keep the turkeys and the pigs out of their fields, but every time you drive out, Old Town Highway, it's just fields are full of turkeys and pigs.
Around the cannons.
Around the cannons.
Yeah, hanging out. So I think they get used to the sound after a while. But, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Folks? Yep. Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay. This is why I get up in the morning now. 7C, update on the housing element.
Okay. Chair, I'll give you a quick staff report?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Painless staff report.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I just wanna give, as with the last meeting, I just wanna give you an update. I just wanna do this just to kinda keep everyone informed and, you know, just to let everyone know where we are at. Anyway, first off, the first five tasks have been completed that were outlined in the contract initially by EMC Planning Group. The comments from the state were issued on June 7th, right on time, and I wanted to include that in your packet, so that way you could see what the state wrote. And EMC obviously got a copy of that. And they've been working on that and addressing those comments. The tribal consultation, Native American tribal consultation, that period expired back on June 17th, but before that date was up, there was an inquiry issued from the Ammamutsun tribe. So as direction from city staff to EMC is to basically move forward with consultation. As far as I know from right now, they have been... They've reached out, made contact, but there hasn't been any follow-up from the tribe as of when last time I checked with them, which was just last week. There are a couple people out on vacation right now, but they should be back this next week, and we'll be able to reconvene right now at this point. The one thing I will say, a draft housing element should be before planning commission, and we're shooting for August 6th. So we'll have that, we should have that hopefully on the agenda by that time, so that way we can all review. So we'll have that, we should have that hopefully on the agenda by that time, so that way we can all review and take a look. And EMC Planning Group will be here, present, and be able to present it to us. So that's what I have, um, right now at this point.
Good.
No, good.
This is going to be pretty lengthy.
In depth, yeah.
What would you think about a, like a workshop on it?
Yeah.
I like that a lot.
Agenda's workshop we can have at EMC.
Well, the, the other idea, actually, wait, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
Yeah, that, that would, yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay.
You're probably going to answer my question.
I was, I was actually floating or thinking about the idea today, how about a special meeting perhaps? Because I think to, you know, for that one to be another item on the agenda, it will probably be here late. So maybe to have a special meeting that everyone can meet on exclusively on this item might actually be worthwhile. It's just a thought, because when we look at August 6th.
That might be good.
And today is July 2nd, and, you know, the, and I, you know, I want to be mindful, I'm trying to, you know, be balanced. I want to be mindful of EMC's, um, time as well because they're pretty swamped. You know, they have clients to lure all throughout the state. And so, you know, I want to give them the time they need so they could do a thorough job as well. And, you know, they were concerned about the timeframe because after they get the housing element to us and we go through it and do it as staff to vet it through, make comments, and we give it back to them, and they have to draft it all up and get it all prepped for commission, you know, the timing was sort of like, that's going to be tight for us, but we'll try to do it. Well, I want to be mindful of that, you know, and.
No, that makes sense.
And that's why I'm thinking maybe a special meeting where we focus in a workshop, like you were saying, might be a good idea.
Public meeting, right?
When is the final, final, final sign draft shipped off to the state? Do you have a ballpark figure on that?
Let's see, let me go, let's see, let me get my schedule out real quick.
In addition to Todd's concern, I think you're going to need more than five days to read this. Just, just, just saying, you know.
Thank you, thanks.
See, um, what I'm going to say is the sequel documentation, we're anticipating, I would say for the, uh, to the 2015, 2019, the four-year cycle, uh, we're, I would say ballpark, once again, September this year. And then the next fourth cycle, or four-year cycle of the fifth cycle, you know, the words are kind of all over, all over the place, sorry about that. That is anticipated to be done and complete, and we are in compliance by the end of this year, by December of this year. And that would put us back on the eight-year cycle with the fifth, uh, the, the fifth cycle complete, and we are, uh, set until 2023. And at 2023 is when the sixth cycle begins. So, anyway, roughly in that timeframe.
Just in time to pass it off to the next guy. It just, in case, well, you're not sure what, they talked, well, we, we got a little behind on, um, on our housing element by about four years. Yeah, and then the state got a little bit upset with us. And Dave can attest to this, as Sam one boy, we really care if the state's mad at us, but, you know, I guess we have to play ball with them. So, um, we're going to have to read a lot.
It's good.
I will say, uh, it's, um, you know, in addition to that, it is definitely beneficial, you know, for leverage that we have over housing development and all that to make sure that we have a housing element that's completely up to speed. I, and also furthermore, the State Department of Housing Community Development has actually been very easy to work with. Very responsive. Um, I've, every time I put in a call, they always respond to me within a 24-hour period. And, um, I've spoken to them quite a bit now, since I've been on this project. So I think they understand that we're on the right track, so.
Can you just, can you read it and record it and just, we can listen to your. You've got a lot of energy, Todd, I have no doubt you can get through that thing.
It's a thick document, what I see about this big.
Oh, boy, okay. I can see falling asleep to that.
And what are you going to get this to us so that we can start reading this?
Let's see, I would say, you know what, um, like, like I said, next month or so. You know, we're anticipating, but, um, you know, I'll, I'll try and shoot for the end of July, but I would say, you know, probably in, in August. But let's, let's, uh, because I, I'd like to propose the idea about a special meeting, you know, or a workshop. And we kind of go through this multiple times. I'd like, you know, for the consultant EMC to be here as well because they could definitely elaborate on a lot more than I can.
Yeah, because we're going to read through this thing and we're not to really, I mean, we're going to, we're going to read it, and I'm sure we're going to adjust a whole bunch of it, but it's, there's, I'm sure there are bullet points or specific parts of it we're really going to know, need to know about coming down the future, you know, and we don't want to all be standing here with egg on our face in the future. Okay. No Cliff Notes, Dave, you can read the whole thing.
Yeah, got it.
Does this have to be done with a public setting, if we do a workshop?
Yeah, I believe it does.
Yeah, it'll have to be agendized.
Right. And that's when, because I know members of the public have asked about when we're going to see this, and that's the time for them to see it, so.
Why would somebody want to see it? Okay, are we good with that one? We can move on to D, report from the planner on current upcoming, upcoming projects. Can you break out your horse blanket?
That's a good horse blanket, thank you.
Glasses?
Thank you.
Okay, actually, members of the commission, um, pretty much, I think, and I'll try and be as, uh, I know my energy is up, I think I had a little too much sugar before tonight's meeting, I think.
You had a dollar for every time you said you had too much coffee or too much sugar, I'd be so rich.
Let's see, I.
Change for chocolate.
Let's see, uh, the Fault Line Restaurant, they are currently under construction right now for the garage. That's underway right now. So, um, also, there's one project in particular that I'll be adding onto this list, and it does involve downtown. Mom and Pop's, uh, there is a new tenant in town, is interested in occupying it. They have turned in their minor historic alteration application to me just yesterday. And, uh, I'll, and I'll try to put it on the August 6th agenda. In that minor alteration application will consist of series of, of projects that include front changes to the paint, new sign, and interior changes that include rebuilding the bar table. And also I think some other changes as well, like I think removing the bandstand, and I'd like to include that as a whole part of their plans. Uh, there have been some, you know, calls and inquiries that I, that I received, you know, from members of the community about what was happening in there. We did put a stop to that, and we, we do have, you know, we're watching them now. You know, because there was a few things that either got ahead of them, either one department said, you know, for whether between the city and the county said they could, whether, you know, the city department are saying, no, 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 you need further permits and all, so, but we kind of make sure, I think we're on the same page. I talked to the county yesterday that, you know, please hold off until the city review process gets done. And, and after they can get a, a proper certificate of occupancy. So, anyway, but the good news is it will fill, um, it'll be a tenant improvement. Sorry, Scott, I'm still laughing at me and my energy and what I must look like. So, um, so anyway, I'm just going to wrap it all up, and we should be able to see that on August 6th.
And you said removal of the stage or?
Uh, removal of the bandstand, from what the applicant told me, yeah. Uh, it, it's not clear whether or not she wants to replace it, but it's over in that corner when you first walk in the door, it's on the left, it's, uh, it's right up in there.
Have you, you've been in there?
Yes, I have. I walked inside and.
How about, how about the floors and everything?
There, that actually did not require a permit. That was one change they did not do, and that was repair. There was a big hole in the floor that had to be done, like a big divot, and they actually filled that in. When I walked in there, I saw a building in there, and I talked to the building official, that did not require a permit. But replacing the bar table does require permits, so.
Interesting.
And on that, uh, I think we're going to split hairs on this stage or, or bandstand. Fire marshal may need to know about that one because probably if you do something like that, I know there's something that has to do with sprinklers.
Oh, he knows about it. He knows about it. I've been emailing him right and left, so.
If you could tell him, I appreciate him being on this stuff because he's, he's really, he's, he's been great to work with, and I've called him on a couple of things, and, and he's, um, he's doing a good job for us, I appreciate it.
Yeah, anytime when it requires like a tenant improvement and it's like special vacant building, the building official and fire marshal are like the two main contacts. So they know about this.
Questions?
The Loaisa property.
Yes.
Uh, it's residential now, isn't it? That, that, the road, along the road there in front, across the street from, uh, Rancho Vista, right?
Yes.
That's all R1 now.
That, it, it has been R1.
Right, and the only reason why they have a cyclone fence is because it's agricultural. Now that it's residential, do, do they have to keep that?
I think it's always been residential.
No, it hasn't. It was agricultural, and then we made it just recently R1.
Well, with the general plan update.
But the only reason why they have a cyclone fence there is because the only way you can put a cyclone fence is if it's agricultural. And now that it's residential, why is that cyclone fence still there?
Circle, 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 David.
Well.
Here's the circle of truth, David, you're right here.
Okay, I, I'll take myself out of here and come in as a citizen.
That's, that's the way you'll have to do it.
Yeah. But anyway, that's just, well, I mean, it's on the agenda. We, these are all on agenda.
Yeah.
So my question is to that.
You have every right to speak at the podium.
Yeah. So, anyway, that, it, it's just, it's just an interesting thought because we, we're, we're sticking to the general plan. We're trying to do the right thing for the city. It's a walkable city, it's a small town. We want to keep the, the small town atmosphere here. And we've built Rancho Vista, and it's a beautiful development, and they're doing all the right things. And we would like to see the adjoining properties to do the same. That's it, you know, and I'm, uh, it's just something that came up and, uh, because at the time, there were several attempts to put cyclone fences all around that property there, yeah.
Let's see, when I, when I hear the word, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, cyclone?
Cyclone, uh.
Like a storm?
Chain link fence.
Oh, chain link fence, okay.
It's another word of saying.
All right, thanks.
So, this is the property that was subdivided at the last June 4th.
It's always been R1, but we just wanted to flesh it out. That was the only thing.
Anyway, yes, if I had any questions.
Anybody? Uh, Midnight Express, their temporary use permit, did it expire?
It expired, and they renewed, and they, and they put in an application for renewal. And, uh, we, uh, we still, that's still pending. Uh, I sent over their application, you know, material to, you know, the, the building official and the fire marshal because there have been some concerns. They want to include their temporary loading dock out there, and we're awaiting, I sent, um, I looked over their, uh, their plans for the building itself, you know, the 5,000 square foot building. And, uh, indicated on there is an image of the temporary loading dock. And I asked our city engineer if this is sufficient for what, what it needs. He came back to me with a list of bullet points that include, you know, you know, with different specs and so forth. So I sent that over to our building, uh, our building division to see if that's sufficient enough, you know, at this time. So, anyway, I'm still waiting word on that. We're making sure we give this thing a thorough review before we say yea or nay to this.
Okay, so if their, if their current permit is expired.
Yeah. They applied right on the date that it expired, yeah. And that kind of gives them some time until we make a decision, but.
Have they rectified their issues with fishing game?
Yes.
That's a good question, and as far as I know, I'm not sure if they have or not. Uh, and I'd like to follow up with fishing game, maybe tomorrow, and just ask them, would you, you know, you know, the, kind of the level of sequence, you know, with, you know, fishing game, would you feel more comfortable having, you know, your issues for, uh, fixed before we make a decision? Or do you feel comfortable with us making a decision?
Yeah, it's, it's a little concerning because, I mean, it, it showed, it clearly showed on the plan, construction zone, limitations where they could go. This was, this was clear, they knew about it. They said their sequoad docket is not going to affect anything, and then they went and. They damaged their riparian area, so that's a big deal. So, I just, I, I'm a little concerned about their morals on this issue. So, I, I see you're on it though. I'm sure it's entertaining, yeah. Well, as, as far as the Fault Line goes, I, um, if anybody gets a chance, go walk to the top of Franklin and walk down behind it, it, it looks wonderful. They've done great landscaping, they've cleaned it all out, they have some nice plants in there, it looks wonderful. It looks like it did 35 years ago, it really looks nice. It's, it's, it's come along. Keep our fingers crossed they can pull off a restaurant there, and it's going to be great.
Going back to his with that Minangus Express, they already disregard for the, um, fishing game. They're doing, um, that, uh, temporary dock. I mean, I'm on board with what he says, they just have disregard to what was in the initial realms of their business.
They pulled a fast one on, on a former city manager in the, in the verbiage, conduct business, conducting their business, so to speak, you know, and apparently, you know, a million BTUs of pallets stacked is part of their business, so. It just kind of irks me because we approved a, um, a produce transfer station.
And that's what, yeah.
Not what they have out there.
Maybe we should go back to enforce that it should be a producer, can't we?
I, I don't, that's a good question, I don't.
Can we just make them?
We never approved a pallet yard, we approved a produce station.
You know, see, this is the thing, and that's the problem, this thing has kind of been, you know, you know, all across the board since planning commission, March of 2018, has approved this. And, um, so anyway, sorry, just want to pick that up right there. So, yeah, it was approved in March of 2018 by planning commission for a 15,000 square foot building, or just, just under that. And, um, you know, the sequel document was all done with it, and all they needed to do is move forward with building permits. But then they, the statement that I got from them is, is that they're running into basically financial, you know, situations and all that. I mean, I don't want to get into too much detail and all because, you know, it's basically, you know, you know, information that was just given to staff and only just very preliminary information. But to save money is that they wanted to go instead of 15,000, start up a 5,000 square foot building and do it in phases and gradually work up to what was approved by planning commission. But to start off even before that is to do something temporary, like, you know, put their, you know, their trucks and their pallets on, and their equipment on site, non-buildable, non, non-structural type stuff in those areas, and just start off so they can at least start making money to make ends meet, and then have the funds to go ahead and start construction. So that's where they are. So they were approved at 15,000 square foot, they scaled it back to 5,000, and now they even scaled it back even further to have temporary equipment on site, you know, trucks and trailers, uh, for, you know, for produce and a temporary loading dock. So, anyway, that's why we're, you know.
But there is city regulations that we can adhere to and make them adhere to, can't we?
Well, in, in the conditions of approval.
I mean.
But there, but there is one thing though that, you know, that, that has been agreed upon, and that is the deferment uh, that was approved by city council of roadway improvements, you know, the, the roadway improvements. That was done, but we need a signature from them before we do anything, so.
I have a hard time seeing that happening.
Yeah.
And they've already knocked down their building two-thirds, and it's just, it's becoming a little uncomfortable. I'm, I'm getting a little uncomfortable with this because I feel like we were lied to and disregarded, excuse me. And I thought we were very gracious to actually, as bad as their plans were and as bad as the application was with, it was a mess. And we were actually very cordial with them as opposed to sending them back and saying, you need to do this application again and get it right. You need to get your plans correct, and they gave us the wrong plans. You need to get all this, we were actually pretty cordial with them, and then, so I guess they mistook our kindness as weakness, and that irks me. And there was a lot of people that weren't in favor of that, but it was really difficult to, to find against it because it's zone commercial.
Or industrial, actually.
Or industrial, yeah. So it's the way it was zoned, so, I mean, it's, it was difficult for us to say, no, this can't happen. But now it's, it's a, it's a blight.
Well, it's something we need to, I think it's something we need to think about when we have another project as such. To make sure that we get the language of what is going to be done. You know, before we give a, allow the permit to be, uh, approved, is to make sure we know exactly what's going to go in there and what, what it's going to be used for.
Yes.
And it, and it has to be, uh, in the documents.
And we did, but then they pulled an in on our.
Well, if that's the case, then we need to, we need to, uh, point that out to. Well, if that's the case, then we need to, we need to point that out to them.
Yeah, true.
If, if it's there, I mean, you're not going to put something in, yeah. What do we have, what do we have documented, and they've agreed on, that we can go forward with, to make sure that we're in compliance when it comes to meeting what the requirements are to have that business there? What is it? Do we have all the right verbiage, language? And then go forward with it? If it, if it's not in there, then we got to make sure that we put that in there next time, to prevent-
Well, they're renewing their contract.
To prevent the confusion, if there's going to be-
Maybe now that they're renewing their, their permit, can we, like, say, "Wait a minute, let's-"
That's, that's pretty much why I'm doing this, that's pretty much-
Yeah, we need to renegotiate it, because, like, I don't feel comfortable with what they're doing, like he says.
Yeah.
Scott, you know, it's, I'm just still worried about the fishing game, if they've even cleared that up, and temporary structures.
And I'm really surprised fishing games being as nice as they seem to be. Anything else on the-
What about the roundabout, where's that at, coming out?
I wasn't going to ask.
You know, I'm going to always ask that, I mean, Loenzl's gave them the land, where we're at with that?
Well, the subdivision has, you know, been approved, and it's right now being reviewed by our city engineering staff, and so it has to be recorded first, and that will give us the land to the right-of-way, and then construction on the roundabout can begin right, soon after. So, right now, it's being worked on by our city engineering staff. I've been working with them, because there seems to be some discussion, and this is subdivision map act stuff, which is where, you know, engineering gets into it. I did have a conversation with our new city engineering contract, CBS?
CSG.
CSG, yeah.
We just started today as well.
Right, right. And I did ask our, our new contract city engineer that if, you know, what's the deal with this, because I'm told one story, then I'm told another one, and what it includes, okay, a minor subdivision, we're talking about tentative map, and then we're talking about improvement plans, you know, for that, well, there's something being developed on there, so what are the improvement plans supposed to consist of? So, that's the whole thing where we're running up. After talking with our city engineer on the new firm, they were saying, "Actually, this doesn't look like it needs improvement plans, because it's a minor subdivision." So, anyway, I gave her the information, and she liked to check in to see if the subdivision map act is in our favor on this. So, that's where we're, where we're at on this.
And that's, so, just so folks know, do you have the definition between a roundabout and a traffic circle?
Do we, or is it-
I mean, is that something, I mean, they both get thrown around a lot, and people seem to freak out when you say roundabout, but you say traffic circle, and people don't freak out, which is beyond me.
Let's call it a traffic circle, whatever it is.
But with that, with the folks, how do you pronounce your name?
Huesa.
Huesa, yeah.
And now they're cooperating with-
Yes, they agreed to give that.
With Maritage and everything's looking good, so now they just need to-
Get it all properly recorded, yeah.
Let's just get it done. Okay.
I don't think you were here when that was coming up.
I had to-
Oh, you had to-
Sit down on that one. Not the traffic circle, the other one. I was looking at Hardee's Lockup.
Yeah.
Looks like something was supposed to take place-
At the end of this year.
Okay.
Next deadline they have is the end of this year.
And that's the, are they going to, we're talking like smoke poles and alarms, or are you talking-
It's like, I think, I think it's like the smoke alarm system. I think full sprinkler is supposed to be done by the end of 2020, based on the agreement. I could double-check on that, though.
Okay.
Let me make a note of this.
Half of it has sprinklers.
From what, the last time the agreement came around, they had half of it sprinkled, I believe, I believe, you know, without looking at the agreement in front of me in the last correspondence. But the, the thing is, I think it's supposed to be fully alarmed and smoke detected by the end of this year, 2019, and then full sprinkled by 2020.
We have 5/28/19, to meet the entire agreement by 5/28/19. What do you have on here on Hardee's Lockup?
Oh, in your, under your comments.
Yeah, in your comments, 5/28/19, that's when you set that.
Let's see, hold on a second. Well, that's, that was my last date that I updated this on.
Okay.
Yeah, that I updated this on.
Progress is being noted.
Yeah, yeah. When I put those dates in parentheses, that was the last time I put a comment into the box.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, well, okay.
Like, for instance, Copperleaf, the last time I put comments in there was on the 19th of June.
Okay. Okay. The Cal Station, that is approved from the court cited on the project?
Yes.
And where are we, are they going to start on that, what's going on?
Right now, they are getting ready to submit building permit plans. So, hopefully, pretty soon, but I understand they wanted to do one submittal ahead of the other, and the building official was like, "No, no, no, you can't do that," or at least that's based on the last conversation.
They have to put in a, they have to put in a lane?
D-sell lane.
They have to do that?
Believe so, yeah.
Right, and they're designing it, we had a conversation with them, a meeting with them, June 20, I believe, in this room.
How are they going to be able to put that?
I know.
It seems like it's awfully tight, I think.
There was a conversation, that's a good question, Chair Freels. The conversation was around the cost of that, and they didn't seem to see a need to move one of the traffic light poles. But if you're standing on that, on that northwest, or whatever corner that is, it's darn near in the center, and so that's going to cost a lot to move that pole, and be time-consuming. So, that was a stumbling block. The developer was admittedly going to Cabo San Lucas, and I was to meet with him when he came back. So, next week, we should continue that conversation. But the focus is on that, on that lane, and how much will it cost, and getting that done. They're very concerned about Caltrans holding up their whole project, and plans need to be submitted to Caltrans for approval, of course.
And they have to, do they have to purchase that land from the state?
No, no, they're improving Caltrans right-of-way.
Okay.
So, they're designing improvements for Caltrans on their right-of-way, on behalf of the city, if that makes sense.
That whole intersection doesn't make sense, because it's a, it's a city jurisdiction on a state highway, you know, it's-
With the Copperleaf project going in, and the school across the street, it should be great to have two crosswalks there, and have it fully centralized, but that's another topic. And the speed limit.
And the speed limit, and the noise.
Terrible.
Can't call them jake brakes, you've got to call them compression brakes.
Oh, yeah.
That's how you get to pass. Call them jake brakes, you can't call them, you know, a-
Whatever you call them, you freak out.
An manufactured name, yeah.
You freak out.
Well, they, you know, the Caltrans stuff. Anything else on the current upcoming projects? Okay. 7E, report from the Subcommittee to Separate Planning Commission from the Historic Resource Board. Who gets to tackle this one?
You want to start, Shirley, or?
Sure.
Here's a copy of the report.
Do we have, if anybody needs it in the audience, do we have?
No, I just assume share it with us right now, because it's a draft.
It has to be, it has to be.
And it'll be public, it'll be public record.
It has to be tonight, so if anybody needs it, if anybody needs a copy of this, we have a few extras.
Okay. I don't think we're going to get that heavy on it, but, anyway, we did, we did, yes. Thank you for reminding us, I appreciate it. So, Shirley, do you want, okay, oh, you want me to go ahead? Yeah, we've met, as you know, since the last time we phoned it and we pushed it out, and we finally did meet, Shirley and I, once and twice, and we did meet with staff. And in the last meeting with staff, we decided that we were going to draft up a letter to present to the city, to present to city council, our intentions to separate. And in the report, I have a copy of all the different things that we did to get to that point. The last two pages is a draft only of the letter.
Okay.
When we met with Ed and Todd, Ed suggested that we do this in the form of a memo or letter to the city council, and David is the one that did a beautiful job in summarizing what all he and I have done. I think he and I have met four or five times, and we met with Todd once, and then we met with Todd again with Ed, and it's just not letting me do this. But anyhow, something that David and I agree is the right time for this to happen, to separate these two, because it didn't make any sense to me when I first came, is that we have the Historic Resources Board approve things to us, and it seems to me like it's much better for Santa Juan Batista to have that extra layer of people who are dedicated to doing that particular function, and then making recommendations that board to this commission, is what made sense to me.
So, that being said, review the letter, let me know, I know there's some typos in it, so, I haven't, I haven't caught that just today, so, let me know what-
I won't find them, trust me, I won't find them.
Find them, please find them, somebody will, no. Anyway, yeah, I'm sure you will. So, let's look at this, let me, let us know what you think. If it has the right language or right verbiage in there, let's go forward, and it really introduces our intention, I think that's the nicest way to go. They get to review it and come back to us, they can send us a letter back to us and let us know which direction they're going to go with, and we're there to support them. And basically, it kind of outlines what we think should happen, and basically, what we would expect to hear from, from them in return, and I think that's the best way to go. So, let us know what you think about the letter, if we need to make some changes on it, fine, let's do that, and then when we're ready, we'll go ahead and present the letter to our staff, they can take it forward.
Great, thank you, this is a lot of work, thank you, thank you very much.
So, the other thing, too, is, what was I thinking of? I've been thinking, I've been busy all day today, I've, I've had all kinds of things to do today, but anyway, help me here, Shirley.
Well, I, what we're trying to do now is to get a kind of a consensus amongst us to, should we go forward, is there anything else that we need to, to do at this point? And we're trying, what we're trying to ask the city council is, do we have your thoughts and blessings to go forward with this, or is this just not going to happen, and they don't think we ought to do it at this point?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a cordial and gentle way of approaching it, get a gentle and cordial way answer back, and, because it might hit, it might freak people out, I don't know. And I don't think it's going to be an overnight process, and we'll be ready for whatever they want, and I think when it comes to this Subcommittee, I think this is it. Let us know what you think, and we'll go forward with that, and then we'll take it from there. And then it'll be up to city council. We just got to get an answer back from city council, because they don't know what's going on right now, and we don't know what that answer is going to be. All, we did get some feelers out there, and we did get some feedback from city council in a roundabout way, and it was positive, so.
And other rumors?
So, I think the timing is right, if you're worried about that part.
Yeah, no, I think that's-
Some, some things to consider, the planning commission is established by the state law, right? It has to happen, hence the television and the council appointment and so forth. In my experience in Salinas, we established a historic review board, and I also managed a design review board for the historic downtown Salinas, and to combine those two into one, and it'd be a less formal meeting, it wouldn't necessarily be televised, that would be after the council, I suppose, but it's just a way of advising the planning commission and the city council, so it becomes an advisory to the planning commission and to the council, and it's just a little less formal. That's the way we did it in Salinas, you could take any size, shape, or form that you wanted, but since I've been down that road a little bit, the two go well together, the two go well together, the architectural review, but if you had an infill project in your downtown, you would want it to, to be in sync with the other buildings, and so that's, you might have an architect on that, on that review board, for example. And so, and so, there's a lot of varieties, a lot of varieties, if you're going to change it, which you could, a lot of different directions you can go. Okay.
Thank you.
So, I think we got a good start.
Just have to read it first.
Yeah, yeah. So, well, okay, so, time, what about, I mean, are you comfortable, we just carry this into the next meeting, into August, and see where we're at for, at that point in time? Or do, I don't think we need to push it any faster than we're doing right now. Okay. All right, so let's, hold us off, as far as the response, and how we want to go with the letter and all that good stuff, and then we'll set that up for next August, our August meeting. Yeah, this August, this August.
All right.
All right.
Moving on to number eight, comments, any planning commissioner comments? Anybody? Just a couple things from the, my career in, 4th of July is coming up, everybody, please be safe, and remember, be mindful, pets and vegetables do not like big booms. So, I don't think anybody in this room is going to be out setting off cherry bombs or AMAs, but that's just, it's, but please be safe and have a great 4th of July week. Let's see here, city planner, anything?
No comments, sir.
Mr. Reynolds, anything?
No comments.
Okay, thank you, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome. That's what we should, we should have a nice welcome, thank you for being here.
We should have had it Wednesday night, it looked terrible.
And the last words I had with, the last word I had with Ed was, "What are you still doing here?" Not that we were-
Come see me on the 9th, right, a week from tonight, at the library.
Oh, okay, okay.
At what time?
4:00.
4:00.
4:00 is 6:00.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.